Regular meeting, today is Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. It is 6 o'clock PM. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jim, you're muted.
I can see Jim's lips moving.
Okay, well, this is Luann Hook.
Brad Murray.
Jim Sayers.
Ann Leppen.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
Then the first order of business is approval of the Bluff Town Council's regular meeting minutes of January 24th, 2023. Has everybody received them, read them, and are there any changes, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Mayor, I missed that meeting, so I'll abstain.
Second.
Any discussion? And all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And Brad abstains. Then the second set of minutes are the approval of the Bluff Town Council Strategic Planning Session Minutes of January 25th, 2023. Has everybody received them? Did you read them, and are there any points of to correct or to change, to add?
I don't know if it's just something in my findings, but the ones that I received just say draft minutes. They're just the agenda, and there are no minutes, so I don't know if it's how I'm opening it or what. The other, all the other attachments were fine, but those, all of the minutes weren't there. The only ones I got were the ones that Linda sent for the 24th.
And, and those were actually the minutes. I mean, it was the same as the agenda. And I talk about it sometimes before special minutes or work session minutes. And those two meetings really needed to be listened to.
So one of the things that I was doing around the strategic planning was looking at what Utah Code says. And so I haven't conveyed this to Linda. I figured I'd let everybody ask their questions tonight. In the, the meeting minutes where Linda describes the agenda, it's sufficient for Linda to just put the link to our YouTube and to Utah Public Notice website for the content. So for meetings like this where they're, you're not taking action, but they're planning sessions, it's permissible to have that link. And in fact, in some council meetings, you can do it in a council meeting. I wouldn't recommend doing it where we're voting. But where we're not taking action, it's permissible to do that. So Linda, on the minutes for strategic planning, if you just plug in the YouTube address and the Utah Public Notice address. Any other questions about the 25th?
Were, were those already plugged into those minutes?
Yes.
Well, I think that we can approve them then, because obviously they're linked to the actual recordings, right?
Okay, yeah, I haven't, hold on, I haven't got them in front of me, Jim, so thanks for saying that. I did not realize that they were already in there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I didn't notice that. But if they're already linked to the actual recordings, I'll make a motion to approve them, because they're obviously, you know, nobody's doctored the.
Verbatim.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Then all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Approval of Bluff Town Council Strategic Planning Session Part Two from January 26th, 2023. Has everybody received them, reviewed them, and are there any changes or corrections?
I wasn't there, so I abstain.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, it's, I'll second, it's the same situation. There's just the agenda with a link to YouTube. Except, well, except he wasn't there for YouTube, so we need to take that off and put on just the Public Notice website.
I lost track.
That was, that was the one that morning that somewhere along the line, it was opted to just do the recording and not YouTube.
Well, we can put the link to Utah Public Notice website, and if that's in there, then that's where the recording is. Grant, did you make the motion? And Lou, you seconded it?
Yep.
All in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then moving to public comment, there will be a three-minute time limit for each person wishing to comment. If you exceed the three-minute limit without permission, the meeting controller will mute you. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment?
This is Dudley, I'd like to speak.
So Dudley, if you'd identify yourself fully.
This is Dudley Beck, I'm the resident of Bluff, I'm president of the Bluff Animal Rescue Committee. I'd like to talk about Bark. By way of background, there are a number of families on the reservation eat dogs at their residence in temporary holding facilities with the help of food donated by Bark. The generous donations of many people have allowed us to continue this program out on the reservation. And when dogs are dropped in town, we have no other option but to move them into a temporary holding facility in someone's yard, a fenced area that controls the dog. The Simpsons have been very generous in providing this type of foster care for months as my wife, who puts up with me, and the four strays that live in my side yard now for several months. Jocelyn, about 10 days ago, called me up and said, there's two little puppies running across the highway at the post office, and almost got hit by a semi, semi truck, please come get them. We did, and I trapped them, and we had no place to put them. This is a comedy story. I talked to Greg Burns, who happened to be out of town at the time, and he generously offered his holding area behind the clinic until such time that he returned to town, which he now has. So a week to 10 days ago, I requested that a temporary holding area behind the old elementary school there where the food pantry is being held could be utilized by Bark, where we would put in a dog house and we would feed the animal. All we would need is a key for access. It would not involve any timer, care provided by any other staff. I heard from Heather shortly ago, 10, 20 minutes ago, that they had a meeting today at 2:00. I don't know who was there at the meeting, I was not invited. I texted Heather, asked her what happened, and she told me that Jim Sayers had said that it's against building regulations and therefore it cannot honor my request. These dogs are going to get spayed and neutered on Saturday, after which there's no place to put them. This scenario happens over and over again. I think Jim has obviously a lot of things on his plate. As I look at your agenda, you all have a lot on your plate. He should know better. This is not a kennel. A kennel is an indoor facility staffed 24 hours. The Planning and Zoning Committee defined it as such.
Okay, Mr. Beck, your three minutes, the three minutes are up? If you would like this as a longer, like this is an agenda item? If you'd like this as an agenda item, we can consider putting it on an agenda, but your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Time is running out. Thank you for your help.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? Wait a second and see if anybody else jumps on. All right, not seeing any hands up or hearing anybody asked to be heard, we'll move on to number one, which is a discussion and vote on the Bluff Airport Maintenance by JAviation. I think I have the name right this time. Jim Hook, are you available to just tell us what this is about?
Well, I saw it was on the agenda, but I'm not sure what, I didn't put it there. I wondered, I'm not sure what you want.
Well, we can, I can muddle through what I know, that there was a, this is out for bidding for maintenance. All this, all these emails went through you. I thought they were coming from you, so I might be mistaken that they were coming from JAviation. JAviation apparently is working with the airport manager to do maintenance, and it's out for bid. The bids will be opened according to the notice of March 1st, 3:00 PM. I'm not sure who all is involved in opening those bids. A public meeting would have to be set, and I'm not in town on March 1st or available March 1st. So the bids are out there, and I assume the process would be we'd set a meeting, and if there's a quorum, those three or four people would open the bids. So is there anyone else who's got a prior commitment to March 1st?
Mayor, I'm not sure. We need a public meeting. We just need two people, me and a councilperson, to open the bids, and then we send those to the engineer, and they connect with the state. I don't, there's, there's not really anything to approve at that point. It's just opening the bids in a, in a.
I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but I believe sealed bids have to be opened in a public forum. We can check. We've got a little bit of time here, because it's not until March 1st. So Jim, do you, Jim Hook, do you want to follow up on what the process is, or do you want me to? I'm fine with, with asking our attorney if it needs to be, if, if one councilperson and you can open it, or whether it needs to be a quorum and open it. That, that's how we did the Sunrise bids and the other CDBG bid.
Well, you could, you can ask the attorney. I'm just, I'm just following what the engineer had told me.
Okay, I will follow up on that and put it on the agenda for the 14th, but if everybody could keep that date in mind, March 1st at 3:00, that's what the ad says, so.
I guess the one thing was, as the council approved, the engineer was asking for $11,000 as our share of the project, and of course, prices were up, and the, the bid or the budget came in at, we would owe $12,500, $510. The motion that Jim made in December was for $12,500, so I, I'll throw in the $10 if you want, but we're, we're right on that way.
Thank you, yeah, I saw that the bidding or that the amount was going to be slightly higher, but I also knew it was around $12,000. So thank you for your work on that. We'll just put it back on the agenda for the 14th, make sure we've got the process correct.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then moving to number two, discussion of a public hearing for request to vacate alley's rights of way and work on public property. If you all remember, we set a date to do this, but because it requires a lot of work, and because we haven't had anyone complete the forms that we have on our website to get on that public hearing, we're going to need to push it out. So those folks who are listening, the forms are on our website. And Erin, can you point out specifically where they are?
Yes, so those are on the town website under, let me bring this up, I don't want to mislead anyone. So those are going to be under the tab at the top that says Documents and Ordinances, and then it's on the page entitled Forms and Applications. And it has the process listed out and has hopefully an easy-to-use alley right-of-way process and application listed, about halfway down the list.
So I think what we'll do is move this to the 14th, so that we can discuss a date. I want to be able to look at the strategic planning dates a little more closely, because Erin and I just walked through with Judith and Julie some specific dates for the groups to be working and meeting. And so I want to be sure that we aren't setting too many things in the timeframe of strategic planning's going on. Any other thoughts from the council? All right, then moving to number three, a discussion and vote on finalizing the USDA grant application for the Cooperative Culture Center's fire suppression system. Jen and Holly Rogers had, well, Jim Sayers and I had met with the USDA people for the state, and then Jen and Holly Rogers graciously agreed to do a kickoff on that grant application, since we were all pretty scheduled. So I got the information from them and followed a checklist that had requirement of up to as many as 30 different pieces that we had to provide. So it took me a while to do, but it's all put together with the exception of two things. One is a letter from our attorney, and the other is a breakdown of the financial audits from the, from our auditors for three years. So to get this open, I worked with Erin, and thank you so much, Erin, because the switch in IT services posed some problems, but all of the documents have made it, or at least we believe they've made it to the USDA, to Carl Larson. And then I have to supplement with the last two sets of documents. And so I'm asking, I know there was a lot to review, I'm asking for a vote to be able to finish this up and ask for the, the grant specifically.
Yeah, I'll, I, I just, I'm familiar with the narrative that the Rogers wrote, and I want to really appreciate that. I thought it was very well-written, and I'll make that motion to move that along.
Brad Maurice, holding up two fingers, he's seconding it. Any questions about it? I know it was a lot to read. The narrative pretty much lays it out, and then the Cooper bid. All right, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then I'd hope to have a little bit more information about this next item. Discussion and vote on State of Utah Workforce's Request for Space During Bluff's Food Pantry Distribution. Kelly Thornton with, is with Workforce, and she's been coming down with two other team members on the Friday, the first Friday of the month that the food pantry distributes food. And they've been providing information to the community members as to what services they have available. And so what Kelly is asking for specifically at this point is to try, to set, she'd like to try setting up a table during the food distribution, have one person at food distribution and one at the table, so they could work individually with both. Workforce would get information about their programs, help them apply for services, get questions answered. And if they start building interest, they'd want to add another day during the month as well. And so they were wondering if they could start that in February, which is this Friday. Kelly has been coming down herself, and so I imagine that we don't have an objection to them setting up a table outside and then one, or setting up a table somewhere, so that they can meet. They would need internet computer access, and I think that's going to be the big drawback. But I can work with them to see how we can manage that. So if we want, yeah, Workforce will take a look at a kind of a permanent arrangement, one day a month, and maybe a second day a month if it's working out. What's everyone's thought?
It seems to me that a table isn't going to work for food distribution, because a lot of people don't get out of their car. So it's more like somebody with a clipboard moving down the line. And, and I don't know how you are going to resolve that internet issue, although there is probably internet available in that area if somebody wants to loan their password or something like that.
I would think that if we had, if we let them set up somewhere with a table, then the person who's doing the food distribution from Workforce could be telling those folks, go find a parking place, come back, and this is where you're going to go meet. That's how I envision what they're doing, because they don't have one person from Workforce during the distribution to the folks in the car, and then one at the table. So if we're inclined to give it a try, I'll see if Kelly can come down on Friday, and then I'll try to help them figure out what we do with internet, maybe check around and see who's.
Mayor, I have, I'm two doors down, and my internet may work, and I'll be happy to, to let Workforce use something like.
The Ford, the Ford is right nearby too, and they've been very cooperative about things like that. They actually are helping with the food distribution sometimes, so they might be willing to help out with that as well. I think the Ford might have a pretty good signal, but I'm not sure.
And Sue Lincoln will probably jump on board too, so just let me know.
So I think we need to have a vote if people are inclined to give this a try.
Yeah, I'll put that out there. I'll vote in favor of this notion.
Second.
Any other discussion? Then all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So I will work with Ginny Burns, Kelly Thornton, and then the rest of you to figure out the internet and see if they'll, since they'll be here anyway for the food distribution, see if they want to give it a try in February. All right, moving to number five, the update on strategic planning. Erin, do you want to take that one?
Sure, I can start. So, um, let's see here. I don't know if we've had an update since all the meetings took place, so I'll do a little recap for everyone on the line who maybe is in it to tune in. So on Wednesday, January 25th, the strategic planners, the facilitators led a fairly large group of individuals through the, the first real big part of the in-person process. It's really a, a long, a long full day, where we identified some key initiative areas that the town would like to put more time into developing long-term plans for. The next morning, council members met with the facilitators to iron out a couple details. There were some items, including a vision and mission statement that were not addressed the day before, so we put a little time on that. And the next steps are the strategic planners and the design team for strategic planning are putting together initiative teams, or I-teams, to specifically address the three initiatives that were identified. Those initiatives are mindful growth, sustainable local government, and livability in culture and community. And so those are the three areas that we're really going to be focused on. We are meeting with the team leads this week, and then those groups will be formed and put together. They'll be doing a lot of work over the next two and a half months to get a really well-formed plan. We'll definitely be reaching out to folks who participated in the full-day event, as well as other local leaders and stakeholders to, to get everything together. Lots of work being done, lots of work to come. Big things I've missed, Erin or council.
No, I think that's a pretty good recap.
Yeah. It's a lot of stuff. Thanks, Erin.
The only thing I'd add is that when Erin and I met with Judith and Julie today, there are some specific ballpark dates we want to hit, and we'll go through those tomorrow at our other meeting, and then probably try to put out some of the information when it shows the timeline, so the community can see it. I'm sure Erin's on top of all this, so thank you, Erin.
We're trying. Thanks.
It's going really well. All right, then moving to the next item, which is report on the Cooperative Culture Center's Design Review Committee's progress, use of the concept worksheet that was created, and then we'll talk about the joint bank account. So Jim, do you want to take this first part?
Uh, yeah, we kind of had a couple of things happening here with the concept worksheet that was forwarded by, I believe, Diana. But what has superseded that at this point is the Inflation Reduction Act that is going out for proposals, and it, it looks like, like, anyway, that's what we talked about mostly today, right off the bat. Unfortunately, we went right until about 2:40, when my computer battery ran down, and I didn't have, I wasn't plugged in, so that ended that meeting. But what we really focused on was the IRA, and it turns out that it's almost tailor-made for this, this partnership that we have. And they're, they're really making millions of dollars available for partnerships between local governments and, and regional, not, low, community-based nonprofits specifically. So we're, it's looking really great for us. I have to read this a lot more carefully. I've got a lot of material that was sent forward to me by Damian. The one we're looking at, and there are only a couple of categories really, but the one we're looking at is, would require a 20% pass-through to the local nonprofit. But all this means is that the more project we, we propose, the more costs, of course, the more for our partner, which is not necessarily a bad thing. They have a lot of good ideas that they wish to move forward with. So Damian and I are working on this, and this is, again, this is what we talked about most of the time. We, we plan on some of the funds being used for planning. We're, we're aware at this point that anything that we propose that large is going to need some, basically a project direction of some kind, and that would probably be an architect or something. But we feel that, that if we're to propose what is now, what has become, whatever has become of the $1.3 million estimate that was given to us by Trihurst for the remodeling cost, plus the fire suppression, and any, of course, inflationary expenses that are added on top of that, we could probably get it. And so there are some ideas out there, but we'll know a lot more next week. Damian's working on his end, and I'm, I'm actually familiarizing myself with the grant. There was, towards the end, I did ask, Heather was there, and I did ask her if there was anything having to do with the building or the grounds or the, that was needed around the CCC, and that's when she mentioned that she had been asked if a kennel could be set up behind the, behind the off, her office there, and a couple of people use that office. And I, that's the word I heard was a kennel. I did not hear the word temporary, I just heard kennel. And, and I said, I'm, I wasn't sure that zoning would, would allow for that. But the other members of the, of the, of the Design Review Committee just felt that that, they, they were not in favor of, at least the, the two that were there. Woody Lee was in there, David was, was present, Heather was there. Heather was not very enthusiastic about it. She was, she was not, didn't want the smell and the sound, the noise. David expressed a no, and so it's more or less declined. You know, I, I, I hope it doesn't, you know, I don't know what else. Um, you know, I, I, I hope it doesn't, you know, I don't know what else to do. That's what the DRC does, they make those recommendations. But, um, and I wasn't sure, I, I didn't hear anything about a temporary, uh, as I mentioned. So, uh, that's about it. Uh, and we'll get to Diane's, um, you know, form, uh, template at some point real soon, I think, but we really needed to talk about this new, um, very, very encouraging, uh, Inflation Air, Inflation Reduction Act that's really plugging a lot of money into rural areas, and we're probably going to get some.
So Jim, is this the Infrastructure Investment Act with the one point, whatever trillion dollars?
Yeah, um, yes, there's, uh, specifically, it's the part of it that is, if anybody wants to look at it, it's, uh, from the EPA, uh, under the EPA direction, and it's the Environmental Justice, EJ, um, some of those numbers, couple of those numbers, environmental justice. So, um, it's really, uh, focused on these, these areas that have, uh, rural areas that have, uh, had some extraction and where there are a good number of minority people living. Um, so that's where we're at.
Have you talked to Drew Cooper at all, who's?
I have not, I haven't, uh, I've been pretty busy with a bunch of things, but, uh, I haven't had a chance to hit, uh, I've talked to Damian a few times, that's taken up most of my, my time. But yeah, I, I've still got that on my list, um, but I'm, we're, I'm kind of shifting into second gear here now.
Okay, I'm just thinking he might be of some re, really good resource, since that's the area he's working in right now with the state.
I'm sure he will be, yeah. Where is he now? Is he back east?
Oh, no, he's here somewhere.
Okay.
All right, then, a discussion of the joint bank account with UDB. Um, if Linda doesn't mind, I'll jump in because I have the most recent information, which is not really any information at all. Linda went up to set up the joint account, and the bottom line is Zion in Blanding said that she couldn't set up a joint account with two entities. So I talked with our attorney on Friday, it was either Thursday or Friday, and he respectfully disagrees with Zion. Um, and he's going to call and talk with Zion's bank to find out what they're basing that on. But there are a number of entities that he says he represents that are nonprofit and a, a municipality. So I was surprised to hear that, um, but stay tuned, I'm waiting to hear back from Chris. And, um, Linda, is that pretty fair statement of what you, what went on?
It is. Um, I've been working with one of the bankers for several months and have always been clear that, this was two entities, um, the banker that I've been working with is on maternity leave, so a different banker talked to me and, and gave me that information. So yeah, it was just kind of a shock.
And my recollection of doing this joint bank account with Zion's is that when Linda first started working with Zion's, that was the answer she'd gotten, it can't be done. And then they went further up the chain into, uh, Zion's, uh, higher-ups and was told how to do it. And so I think Linda's right, it might be the change in personnel, but at this point, I think Chris probably should make the call and figure out where we are.
Did, did they say why they couldn't do it ahead of time when that woman was still there? Like, what was the holdup then?
Um, at that point, we were, uh, I was getting the documentation that we needed, things like the minutes, um, the resolution, um, and we were looking at a specific kind of bank account called, I believe, public value account, um, so, but the second banker said that it's against, basically, she said it's against the law in Utah or anywhere. So, um, that's where we are.
So in the meantime, for anybody who's looking at the financial reports, the $80,000 grant that Jim Sayers successfully scored for fire suppression is noted in the financial report, um, that it's for the CCC. So if you're looking, that's where that $80,000 is deposited because you couldn't just leave the, the money sitting out there. So then, assuming that this gets successfully cha, uh, set up, then Linda will be making that transfer. Anything else on that? All right, moving to number seven. I know that Aaron and I've talked about doing some changes on the agenda, but in the short term bef, until Aaron and I find time to make that a priority, I thought it might be easiest to have listed committees and, and that type of thing, so we don't have to add them every time, like try to remember who asked to do a report and just get it on the agenda. And I know I probably could move the CCC Design Review down there too, but sometimes that takes more time, um, than the others. So the first one is Bluff's Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting from February 1st. Lou and, and Aaron?
Yeah, um, so they did meet February 1st. There was a land use clearance, uh, which was in addition to a house that's built out at Coppercliffs. It's not quite finished, but they wanted to add a garage, so that was a pretty easy one for them to approve. Um, and then there was another one that came on that wasn't a land use clearance, but came to ask, uh, guidance and suggestions and, uh, to kind of get an idea of what is involved. And they're looking at possibly, they own the property out by the old dump at Camp Sticky. So nearby, camp, by the camp. Um, anyway, they were thinking about doing a subdivision out there, they wanted to go off the grid and, um, that sort of thing. So they were asking quite a few questions along that way. And just, I think for planning and zoning interest and the town's interest, the reason they have that land is they traded some B, the BLM, some property out by Hovenwee. BLM wanted that for trails and things out there, and so they traded them this property in here, which is what can happen, you know, through our whole town. Um, Aaron's giving them Town of Bluff addresses, and so they are excited about that. And that was really all that I felt like, um, concerned us. Um, the next meeting is February 15th. So questions?
So did, did I mis, misunderstand that you're assigning addresses already?
Um, they're, the email addresses.
Oh, the email addresses for planning and zoning? Okay, I was confused. I thought you meant the addresses for the, the subdivision you were talking about.
No, no, nope, just the emails so that they have official, uh, email through the, the new IT s- system.
Anybody else? Questions, thoughts? All right, then moving to, uh, B, the Active Transportation. I realize I left out the word Advisory Committee and, um, the letter to stakeholders. So Lou, do you want to take that, or?
Sure. Um, so we have a meeting tomorrow, um, but that, that letter went, I think, didn't listen to the last YouTube, but it seems like we read that out loud of what the general, uh, letter was. But anyway, it's basically just an invitation to the stakeholders. There were three letters listed there, one, um, that was for the school kids, the parents and the teachers, what's involved at, at their workshop, and then what's involved for, uh, the stakeholders and the, the government types, UDOT and so on, uh, at that session. And then on, uh, the parents, that were not the parents, the community members, what they would be invited to. So it just basically lays out the three workshops and what will be involved at each one, and trying to get support to get people to come and, and give their feedback, because this will be the time to put out, you know, look at, look at ideas of where people want things and whatnot. So it's just a, a preview of the letter that, um, needs to go out to these folks to see who can come and who they can connect to if they, their calendar's full and, um, just be able to get as many people that want to be involved, um, enough notice to get themselves either here in person or virtually.
So when I met with Molly Schmidt on Friday, she was revising the letter that she sent to us that we had on the previous council meeting. And we did not get that, like, the revisions of the letter until yesterday, sometime late in the day, and it didn't have the stakeholders attached, and she'd worked on that while she was sitting with me. So I don't know how people, you know, I understand the need to get it out, but I also want to be sure that we see the letter, that everyone has seen and read the letter that is actually going, because it's not the one that was for, was presented at the meeting before.
Well, have you still, have you seen the, the new one or the revision?
I saw that it came in, but, um, late yesterday, but I haven't had a chance to read it because I was in meetings all day and, and I'm still in a meeting.
Mayor, we could, we could go with your approval to, to approve it once you read it. Um, if, and I trust you for that, so, you know, if we need a motion to do that, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I, I kind of like that idea, is if you see something, then tomorrow we meet again, and the, the, it was set up to where we would meet as a committee tomorrow and look over the, the, you know, finalize the draft, uh, but it's, that's the gist of it. It's not anything too critical or anything, you know. So if, if you could read it tonight or between now and tomorrow.
It's not going to get read tonight, I'm sorry.
No, tomorrow, no, but, but tomorrow, we don't meet till 1 o'clock, but it, it seems like it's something that you can, you know, we can, it, Sayers is, he's there, I'm there, we've got the whole crew, and I don't think there's anything in there that would be detrimental, just asking people to join us.
Yeah, I'm a member of the Active Transportation Committee, and I will second, um, Brant's motion. Uh, there, it is going to have, the one I read is going to have to be revised to include the time and the place and the date, uh, anyway, uh, because none of those are included in the letter, so, um, you know.
Okay, so, so here would be my suggestion on amending that motion, because three of us can't be in the Active Transportation Plan, so the two of you can look at it, read it, and decide what you think is appropriate. Um, my, my other concern was when we were, I was talking with Molly, are the dates for this, because they're falling flat on top of the same timeframe that we're working on strategic planning, which in my mind takes precedent over having a public hearing on Active Transportation that could possibly be pushed out another month. But that's just my initial reaction to that, because I don't know what revisions were, were made to the letter. So if people want to vote to do it that way, um, I'm just not going to be able to, to read it or sign off on it.
The, the thing with the dates, um, is that we've gotten the key stakeholders to be able to do it. So it's, it's Bike Utah who we've signed up with to do the Active Transportation Plan, and if we're going to get it done in time to apply for the construction grants that are available this fall, we need to kind of stick to this timeline. And this was set up, you know, a month ago with the school is the one that was key too to have, she offered the school during, she only had like a couple of dates, one was earlier, and then this one, um, was the date that she was, was available to offer up the whole school, have all the kids come, you know, get the parents to come, and have Bike Utah come and, and, you know, she, they, they work with them with fixing bikes and safety and all the rest. So those two big key players have those dates set down on their, their agendas, their calendars, whatever. Um, so, uh, it would really, uh, throw a wrench in the whole planning process if we needed to change those dates.
You know, I, I could amend my motion and let Lou and Jim make that decision tomorrow. That would, that would solve our, our quorum problem and, um, decision-making.
Well, we still are, we're still going to be stuck with March 23rd and 24th regardless, Mayor.
And, and that would be my concern, but if, um, I mean, the dates and I, I'm sorry, I don't have them right here in front of me, but the dates that Aaron and I were talking with, with Judith and Julie are pretty heavily consumed in March, that March timeframe. So if people don't think it's too much to be asking some of the same stakeholders to participate, um, and you want to move forward with it, I may be the only person out there who would like to slow it up, so I can live with whatever is decided by the group.
I, I think as long as they aren't, if you don't schedule that on the exact same day, I mean, and even that, it's just going to be a couple hours in the morning and then a couple in the afternoon on the, the Friday. The Friday is the day that's tied up in the community center, and Thursday afternoon is at the elementary school, and that one's taken care of with Bike Utah and the school when involve us over there on Thursday.
So, so you said there are three letters, and there, we only have, I only have one, I don't have one to the school.
Well, I have the old ones, I have the old ones from last week, so whatever the current one is, is what we need to look at. But yeah, it said basically the same thing, because it's, it's just lining out when the workshops are and it, so we can see what the updated version is, is it the meeting tomorrow or?
We're going to have a busy March, but let's get it done, let's get it done.
There's one thing that kind of concerns me. When planning and zoning has a meeting, special meetings or hearing, it's very clear and transparent that it's planning and zoning that's doing it, um, and, you know, they're the experts. So, um, in this, in the first part of this, you've included the Town of Bluff, and I feel like this is, um, coming from the Bluff Active Transportation Committee and Bike Utah. Your advisory committee, I think when I first read this, it was really confusing to me, um, that you included the council, and I think it would be confusing to others. I think it needs to be clear that it's your two committees and, you know, of course you, um, are under us, but I, I would suggest clarifying that.
Okay, I'll watch for that.
If, uh, if that's a revision that is acceptable to Brant on his motion and, uh, the rest of the revisions of, um, I will concur with continuing my second for the motion as revised.
Well, I'm just going to remind you.
Clarity of who's sponsoring this and, uh, clarity on stakeholders and the time and the date. And if anything else comes up, let us know.
Okay, Aaron had something. Aaron?
I have two thoughts. So regarding who this is coming from, so it was very clear when this committee was set up that the town was in support of creating the committee, and so therefore I would, I would advise that you really think about that. I think it would be appropriate that this is coming from town council, because this committee needs town council's buy-in in order to get what they're asking for done. So I would politely disagree. I think it's important that it comes from town council and that town council has an active role in this. Now, we understand that the Active Transportation Committee is the one who's coordinating with Bike Utah. Now, this leads into my second thought. Lillian, regarding, so I, I'm hearing the concerns about timing, and yes, March and April are very busy. After the workshops, after those two days of commitment from, from town, from, um, the committee, what are the next steps and the time commitments required from your committee versus Bike Utah? Are they taking a lot of that information, or is there going to be a lot of additional follow-up where these overlapping stakeholders might be pulled in different directions?
Uh, that after, after we have those workshops, then it's back to Bike Utah to start working up the Active Transportation Plan. And as they work it up, they'll meet once a month with the committee and with, uh, to, to kind of review it, and they'll, UDOT will be at that meeting, there'll be a couple And they'll, UDOT will be at that meeting. There'll be a couple of, you know, key players probably like the St. Buxton School people and UDOT. The, those key people and then our committee will meet once a month with them. But yeah, the rest they do. That's the beauty of, of them doing it. But they want to hear from the community. They don't want to just hear from our little committee or just the council. They want to hear from the actual community. But then after that, they, they take it over. So, that's why I say if we have it all at the same time, I don't think it's really too much of a problem.
Call the question.
Brant, Brant tells another.
Yeah, we, you know, we've got 15 people at our meeting with us, the eight of us and, and those are the stakeholders at a lot of meetings. So, I think we can pull this thing off concurrently and do both of these. So, I'll just say question and let's vote on.
Yeah, and so that, uh, with Erin's, um, comments on who it comes from, that I, I felt like that when I read the letter that it needed to be from the town of Bluff with the active transportation plan and the, uh, Bike Utah under the town of Bluff. There, there, both of us, Bike Utah and the, the committee are working for the town council. So, it's, it's a town council sponsored thing, but, uh, we're the ones doing the, the work on it. Oh, Brant, you're, you're muted, but.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, they're like, I think the mayor just kind of talked about those committee standings. I like that.
So, do we need a new motion or, or what?
I, let's see if I can recap where the amendments are. So, listen carefully. That at the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, Luanne and Jim will review all three letters, the stakeholder list, make any appropriate changes in their mind and one of them will sign it. Is that, is that what captures the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Then if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So, moving along. Oh, and then Erin, can you make sure that Lou has the, Lou and Jim both have the current copies that were sent by Molly? Thanks.
Will do.
Then update on the solar, the Bluff Solar Eclipse Planning Committee and a vote on the bylaws. And, um, Erin, would you mind taking that as well?
Sure. So, so far the Solar Eclipse Planning Committee has had two meetings. Uh, the first one's kind of an introductory call and a review of the purpose of the committee. And also we got a sense of the 10 official appointed folks, uh, and what their interests are. In the second meeting, we talked about the specific subcommittee topic areas. We boiled those down to five areas which will be focused on during the next several months, including emergency services, a communications plan, traffic controls and parking, human needs, and educational events that would maybe help hold people in place. We've heard during multiple, uh, multiple, multiple calls that the mass exodus after the event is something to kind of be aware of. And so, those are the five areas that we're really focused on. Each of the committee members, um, self-assigned into those different categories with a little bit of overlap, which is great. Uh, we certainly will be looking for help throughout the community in pulling all of this off. Our next meeting is on February 15th at 10:00 AM and we will be focused specifically on emergency services. Our fire chief will be able to provide us, um, with the first working draft of our emergency services plan. And he has already received information from the county regarding their draft. So, that'll kind of roll, ours will kind of roll into theirs. Um, but that's the focus during, during this next meeting. We found it, uh, to be very important to make sure we have emergency services, uh, a plan covered first. And then we'll start rolling into those other topic areas. Are there any questions?
I should just add that Erin is, uh, chairing that committee because so many of these pieces fall within administration. And so, my primary role is to back up Erin and what she needs. But trying to not take over the committee so that Erin has to start, well, is learning all these areas and, and the stakeholders, which is really super important for her to be able to do and be the interface with like the county and et cetera. So, thanks Erin, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to initiate the committee and the bylaws.
Uh, the only area I did want to mention for the bylaws is the, how to dissolve it and when to dissolve it. Um, that area was highlighted in the bylaws. Thank you all for, for looking at the draft. Um, the committee wanted to leave it up to the town's discretion, whether you wanted to dissolve after the event, after a debrief of how the event went, or if you'd like to keep it as an ad hoc committee. There is another solar eclipse happening in April. Bluff will only be in 45% totality. So, that's pretty low. I want it to see that we would actually have, uh, many visitors. But they wanted to leave it at the council's discretion as to how and when to dissolve.
No? Um, yeah, I just, I just wanted to share that, um, was he Sergeant, probably Taylor? I'm not sure. Uh, but anyway, he stopped one day and wanted to make sure, or had heard that the town of Bluff was hosting some event. And I assured him that we were not and that we were just, you know, gearing up to kind of be ready for visitors. Um, then let's see. Oh, he did say that there will be, uh, command posts set up around like at the intersections, 191 and 163 and 261 and, or 163 and 262, that sort of thing. So, um, anyway, they are working with the county as well, but they are planning on having a pretty big presence just to keep people slowed down. And we talked about it, you know, it's these, it's not just a single source event like the Red Bull and all those kinds of things where these people will be spread out, um, other than like it, they'll be spread out, you know, it, they could be spread out over 100 miles. Um, so it won't be quite as focused unless they all come right here to Bluff. But, um, but anyway, they are ready for the people traveling the highways and whatnot.
And so, there's a motion by Jim Sayers to approve the bylaws. Jim is the, does that include having it dissolved at the, at the town's discretion or at a specific date?
Well, I saw that in there and I thought, well, we'll just cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay.
I'll second Jim's motion, Mayor. And we'll just let the committee run until it's dissolved. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, there's probably not going to be a lot of interest in it after, after the eclipse. But if there is, we'll hear from them and maybe we'll continue them if they want to keep working on space.
Linda, were you going to say something?
Um, no.
We'll just leave it in as dissolving. I think it said October 23rd and then we can extend them if we want to. Is that, that's.
Right. We may have to shift it a little bit if all the people come and they just don't leave. That, that will be a, a need for a new committee, for sure.
Then all in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So, that's five yes. Um, this goes into the second part, which is Salmon County Solar Eclipse Committee. Um, which Erin and I are, are both attending those meetings. Um, I think it's probably very similar to what Erin has described. The county's getting organized, pulling together resources. Um, there were a couple of enlightening things that popped up. Um, and I'll let Erin explain what, uh, Chief Lot provided to her because he, because he's on the county one. The only other information that, um, I had had that I contributed was that the BLM enforcement has decided that they need to be involved. So, they are jumping on the committee as well and have asked to have input through our committee in Bluff because they're quite concerned about the resources. I would probably respectfully disagree with Sergeant Taylor that I think we're going to be more heavily impacted than he believes. But I would like to be proven wrong. Uh, but thanks Lou for dispelling the myth that we're having a big event. We are having an event, but it's not an event. It's an incident. We are having an incident. So, Erin, why don't you take it from here on what else there is?
Yeah, so the county actually is going to, um, also, uh, put together some subcommittees to focus on specific areas. Um, up until probably January, it was much, very much focused on, you know, the economic, uh, impacts of the, the tourists in the area. Now, there are going to be at the direction of Tammy Gallegos, um, some additional focus on emergency and preparedness and things like that. The initial draft I received from Anthony includes, uh, and this would be from county emergency services, does include those, um, staging points that, that Lou mentioned. The, the primary one is at the intersection of 191 and 163, uh, down to a Valley of the Gods and Monument Valley, uh, which is wonderful for us for, for many reasons, uh, that they would be located so close. Uh, the county does recognize that Bluff will be in the line of totality for a, actually significantly longer period than Blanding or Monticello. So, that's probably why we're receiving those resources down here, which is wonderful. Um, but as I mentioned, you know, Anthony will provide us some additional updates as to what he's learned. I think, uh, from the county level as well, you know, there's just, there's a good network of people that, you know, they've been talking to people from the park service and, um, to learn about what happened during the 2017, so, uh, eclipse. So, we can kind of have an idea as to what to expect to the best of our ability. Um, they meet monthly. Uh, we're meeting twice a month right now. They meet monthly. So, we should have another update for, from that, uh, sometime in March.
Anything else on that? All right, I put report by roads committee. Not so much that I had anything to report. I don't know if Lou does, but I just wanted to get this on the radar of trying to list out some of the committees. Michael Havikin did indicate to me today that he would like to have a roads committee meeting, Lou, by Zoom. So, um, I'll maybe see how he's, he said he's going to try to set it up. He doesn't know if he knows how. So, if he doesn't, I'll probably enlist Erin to help, you know, set up the roads committee sometime in the next week or so. Does that make sense to you, Lou?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, unless somebody else has a road related issue, um, make a move to number eight. Discussion and vote to deposit the sales tax to the Public Trust Investment Fund. Linda, that's yours.
We, we set that up, um, last month. And Dave, our accountant emailed, um, suggesting that we have our sales tax deposited straight into the PTIF. And, um, he is not in favor of moving things back and forth. But to, just doing this, the sales tax would help us to increase it.
So, does that include the resort, all of the taxes, the TRT and all of it, or just the single, single sales tax?
Right, sales tax.
But that's a good start, I'd say.
So, and basically all I do is talk, um, or email with the person at the state, um, Jason Nielsen about, um, setting it up. And, um, it's pretty easy.
It's an automatic, automatic deposit?
Right.
Automatic deposit?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And I would be in favor of putting all of it in there. And then if we get a big bill, pulling it out as we need it. But if we can get at least one of them going, that would be good. You're muted, Ann.
You're muted, Ann. Yeah.
Both, both our attorney and our account and the auditors recommended against doing that. They were very.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we, um, automatically deposit our, our sales tax monthly into that PTIF.
A second.
Any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right. Update on the point in time count. Peggy Green with the State, um, Department of, that handles unsheltered homeless issues for our region came down and met with me and then we went over how the point in time. Salmon County was, uh, given a little bit of misinformation, I think due to misunderstanding. The point in time was the 25th. Where did you sleep on the night of the 25th? And then 26th and 27th were the three days to do it, um, to do the count. So, uh, Ginny Burns went with me and we really canvassed the entire area of any place. Well, first we went up and down the streets and then went out to various areas where we knew people had been last year. And this year the count was, um, there were four uh, households that were unsheltered. And I think that there were two factors, well, maybe even more. One is that we've had a wetter year. So, it was really impossible for people to pull out and, and stay in the canyons where we caught quite a, a number of folks last year. Um, and secondly, because it's been colder, people are moving the, um, into warmer climates. Both of those were situations that Peggy Green said she was seeing throughout the, the whole region. I think she has four counties, that that seemed to impact. Um, there were a couple of other things that were, I thought might be minor contributors, but those seem to be the biggest contributors to why our count was lower. But our count was lower and it was consistent with everybody else in the sense of dropping. So, every year roughly around this time, we'll be doing the point in time count. I went out on my own two more days because the misinformation was that we only had three days to do it and we really had five. And so I was able then, the ground had dried up and I was able to get into places that I couldn't get into on the 25th, 26th and 27th. So, we filed the reports and then we'll see what happens for next year. Any questions about that? All right.
Thanks for being such an advocate, girl. Amazing. It's great.
So, thank you, Brant. Next thing is update on the IT changeover. And please, Erin, do not tell me this is where you quit.
Well, as folks know.
Yeah, this is where I quit.
Yes, that's fair. I was like, if all the council members are on tonight, that's great. Um, so as, as everyone knows, including many of the audience members, when you go through an IT change, um, it never goes very smoothly. I will say this one has been particularly rough, especially given that our requests were, I think were relatively straightforward. And so, I've, I've thought a lot about how I would address this during our meeting tonight. Um, overall, I'd like to say that I really sincerely appreciate the council's patience as well as our board committee members, um, who received email addresses, their patience and, and getting online. Overall, um, we are still working through, I would, I would say quite a number of, of challenges, including some of the, the pretty basic things that we asked for, um, that we're going to start getting billed for, like shared drives and things like that. It would be my recommendation to the council, um, you know, I, I know this was voted upon, uh, actually quite, quite a while ago, um, regarding looking at a couple of different service providers. At the time, the discussion was really around the physical changeover in our infrastructure that's located at the Bluff Community Center building and having to have another provider come in and run line and things like that. What I would recommend to the council, given that this IT shift has. What I would recommend to the council, given that this IT shift has, I will just kind of flat out say, they have not been very action oriented. I've had to pretty much pull everything and remind and ask. It has been so hands-on and I think for the price, at the time that we look at shifting office locations potentially to the CCB building, if and when that comes online, I would recommend that the council look at other IT providers who might be more customer friendly, especially given our needs in our small team. I think it would be appropriate at that time to look at additional, additional providers. However, until that time comes, we are powering forward and I would just encourage anyone, if you have questions, please reach out to me. I am here to help. If, if you need to speak with, with one of their providers directly, we can absolutely set that up as well with advance notice. So I'm not going to encourage you to tell me all of the issues that you're having right now, but please reach out to me individually. I know there are still a lot of problems going on. So thank you for your patience and to the public, if we missed any of your emails, I would just say re-mail us because it's, it's been quite the nightmare. So I apologize.
Thanks Erin. You, you've done an amazing job. Because when we go now to number eleven, let's just say if Erin had walked in on Friday and said, I'm not moving, I'm staying where I am and I quit, I would not have been surprised. So last week, the senior center had a broken water fountain, which started at some point after the senior center folks left, so sometime around, you know, from four or five on, until Erin and the senior center people arrived to discover both the senior center and the town office one and the hallway were flooded. And so without getting into all of the gory detail, what we did was turn the claim in immediately to Travelers Insurance, who is the insurance company for the Utah Local Government Trust. I worked with our contact person at the trust, then we worked with the insurance agent to get the claim set up and then have been working with the adjuster. In the meantime, the word to us on Friday at three o'clock from the insurance company was essentially, do not delay, get somebody in here today. Well, Erin had done a fabulous job with coordinating, getting a shop back, fans, heater set up while I was trying to make the phone calls. The bottom line is we had a crew come in from ServPro in Durango, but they're a national company and they were the first recommendation of the insurers. They came in Saturday and they were in again today. The good news is that the recommendation is that the carpet does not need to be pulled. It's dried out, they scrubbed it today. The second good news is that we do not have to replace any insulation or drywall because A, we have really tall, whatever those things are between the floor and the, the wall, you know. Everybody knows what I mean, that plastic thing. They're high, yeah, thank you, they're high, so they prevented getting to the drywall. It did soak under that common wall between the two entities. The bad news is we have no insulation in that wall. The good news is we have no insulation in that wall, so it couldn't get wet. So the bottom line is they pulled all their stuff. I wasn't there today. Erin was also not able to be there, but it was handled by Malia Collins and Linda to let them in, let ServPro back in, get their equipment, do the vacuuming and cleaning, scrubbing and whatever. Right now, it looks like we're good to be able to move back in and be fully operational. No phone lines or, or computer lines were damaged. The senior center was a mess and I think my only concern is, is the smell test. So if there's anyone out there, I know a couple women in town who claim they have the best noses in the world and if you have them, please come and find me because I'd like you to do a sniff test. I wasn't happy with the percentage of humidity in the, in the rooms, but we're not sure if that percentage was during the dryout or now that it's dried out. So we'll follow up on that. Our adjuster told me immediately, go ahead and hire a contractor to fix the repairs. All right. Then he said, never mind, I'll help you find someone to fix the repairs. And the only repairs we really have are those wall boards. I think we're good on everything. So Erin, did I pretty much cover the nightmare?
You, you did and I just, I do want, I do want to thank Ann for her many, many hours and, and getting the right folks out here. This was, this would definitely fall under one of those emergency kind of situations. So I really appreciate her, her being around and certainly I look forward to being in town full-time. I was there for, for the first, for, for the real wet part of it, but I'm glad to hear things are better today.
We, we got so many compliments from both the adjuster and the, the initial contact at the league, the Utah Government Trust. They, they said, you know, believe it or not, some entities just wait, trying to fix it themselves. I took one look at that and I'm like, this is not in my job description. It's not in Erin's. That's why we pay for insurance. So I think we're good. We'll keep watching it. We're not going to close out the claim. How it works is the insurance company said they will pay ServPro directly for all the services they provide. When we get to the construction phase, they will pay us to pay for the construction, which is, which was the other thing. The same area that's flooded is the area for the CDBG grant remodel. So I was only picturing the wall coming down, being put back up and us tearing it down again in six months. But anyway, that's where we are. Any questions, thoughts on that? Okay, well, if anybody's listening and they've got the good news, let us know. Item twelve, discussion and vote on the request to use EMS and volunteer fire department fundraiser money for license plate differentials and an update on the EMS training. We have three people trained from this class. We have three people who are working on getting their final certification. They're set to go forward. Dawn DeLago and Kathy Carson have been working with them on the paperwork pieces, getting everything paid for in advance as much as possible. I think they had, each had one out-of-pocket small thing that they had to pay for because we couldn't figure out how to do it. But hopefully they'll be up and ready to start working after the final steps of certification. One of the things that came up was the license plate cost between the standard license plate and the personalized plate for EMS firefighters, first responders. And it's seventeen dollars and it was requested that the town, with the town, take the money from the fundraiser and pay that difference. And I think personally for me, I think that's a great way to use the money. I did run it by the fort just to see if there would be any objection. Of course, the fort was very wonderful. It's like, we don't care what you do with it, just do it. So I think it's seventeen dollars a plate and we could offer it to EMS and the volunteer fire department whenever someone's renewing their plate if they wanted, we'd cover it.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
So may to approve that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five ayes. All right, then the thirteenth item is review and approval of a letter of support for Bluff Community Foundation's grant application. That I think did make it into the packet, Erin, for everybody to read. Has everybody read it and?
Yes. Motion to approve. Great letter. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? I know that Dan Meyer might be on, but if there's no questions, then all in favor, say aye. Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Great job.
That foundation looks wonderful. I'm sure we'll find lots of projects the foundation might want to look at. Thank you. Okay, on the other, I have an exciting announcement to make. I quit, no. So today I met with, I'll do a longer report on the agendas next week because there's some things we have to talk about, but I met with Superintendent Ron Nielsen today and Tom Carraro, who is the grounds facilitator. And you know, all the discussion we've had about the old elementary school playground and the inspection and the playground committee and the parents who really want this opened up. And then Jocelyn Meyer and Dan Myers let me know that Blanding has an open playground on their elementary school. Why don't we? So I had a number of things for the superintendent, both, I started with that and just said, hey, I don't know if this is true, but I've heard that Blanding has this, it's open. And you know, Ron is such an easy guy to deal with. He's just sitting there looking at me. And I said, so is it open and to the public and why isn't Bluffs? He said, Bluffs will be. It's a law. It should have been open to the public. So you'll notice there's a sign that's already falling down on the fence. They will open it. It should be open to the public. I'd say within the next week. Everybody be a little patient, but Ron said that the decision was more or less until somebody raised the issue, they weren't clamoring to open all these, but by state law, they have to have it open to us. Here's the caveat, and this is why this is so important. If the only criteria they have to be able to close it to the public is if there is an imminent threat to health, safety, or welfare. And I would submit to everybody who has a dog that's running loose, that could be going into an open playground area or the school area, that accumulation of doggy poo could pose that situation. So I'm doing more work on it. I'll take it to the playground committee. I'll contact some people on the side that I know their dogs are running over there. But kids, now you can go out and play on a playground that's nice and safe and gets inspected every year. So that's the only other I have, but I was really excited about it.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, thanks for following that through because that's, that's great. And there's a gate, so the gate will still be closed. It just won't be locked is what I'm assuming. So like dogs won't just like accidentally wander in.
That's the assumption I would make, although I don't know. I mean, it could be that they take a gate off, they might leave the gate. I don't know. I didn't go, I had some other things that needed to get done, but that was a good question and we'll see what they do.
I'm sure they'll have it shut just so that it keep all the little rudders in during recess and whatnot. It'll, it'll still be there, I'm sure. But yeah, and then, but anyway, yeah, thank you. That, that's awesome. It's a good use of that. I mean, it's taxpayer money, all the rest of the reasons, so it's too bad it had to become a lot of, be open, but that's, that's great. And if there's other comments, otherwise I have one other, other.
Okay.
Okay, so the other, other was last meeting we had, when I was looking through the minutes, we had said we'd look at the fort's letter of support and it wasn't on this agenda, so maybe just put it on next week's.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Seven twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you all.
Good job, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.